Going to call the meeting to order. Look, Smith, please call the roll.
Counselor.
Present.
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 Councilmember Simmons and councilmember King are both not here. With four present, we have quorum.
Please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of West Virginia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will entertain a motion for agenda approval.
So moved.
I'm sure. Are there any updates, changes? All in favor of the agenda as presented, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is our first opportunity for public comment. You'll have three minutes to address counsel. I'll start with who's on Zoom unless Barbie want to give. All right.
There's anybody on Zoom would like to speak, please press the raise hand button? Nope.
All right. Seeing none, I will close public comments. All right. Wonderful. Here we are. Okay. So this evening, we will be completing our city manager candidate interviews. And so what I'd like to do now, as we just get started, is hand it over to you, Barbie, to kind of give us the overview of how things will go and then we'll get right to it. Thank you and good evening.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight on this very important evening with city manager interviews. So I just wanted to give just a few instructions, let you know how this will work. If you have any questions, feel free and then we'll, uh, we'll get rolling. So I'll go ahead. I'll walk in the candidate, introduce them to you. I will let them know that they can introduce themselves, um, you know, one to two minute opening statement and then introduce candidate remarks and then we'll ask questions. So that's when I'll hand it over to you to start asking questions. So there's Aaron made printouts of the questions based on the rubric qualities that were determined to be important in the beginning of this search. Those categories you can see are municipal knowledge, experience, communication skills, et cetera. So we'll just go round robin style. We'll begin with Councilman Tucson and I'll have you ask one question from that first category municipal knowledge and experience. And then we'll go to you, Mayor Brown, and you'll ask from that second category, communication skills, and we'll work through. Once it gets back to you for your second question, you'll probably, if I count it right, you'll be at community and economic development. So each person basically pick your one question from that category when it becomes your turn. Remember that question or circle that question and ask it for the same candidate or ask it that same question to the same candidates.
I don't.
This.
This should be.
We have, I believe there's extra copies, Aaron.
I have these. I don't have the question.
Yeah, I have a copy. I have two copies.
If the questions that we submitted don't fit with the category that we're.
Oh, yeah. How are we doing?
How do we do that?
I think it's so the, the questions that are bolded on here are questions that counsel suggested. So if you guys are okay, I would say if it gets to your category, just take into consideration and ask that. Yep.
Okay. Okay. The bold ones take first priority as we go through.
So we're picking the same questions, asking each candidate the same questions and we're just rotating through until time. You'll find some people are very clear and concise in their answers. Others will want to give them more information. So you may have three times to ask a question. You may have two times. And I will give you a five minute warning. You'll just sort of see me raise my hand with five minutes to go and then just let them have any closing statements like we're in court. Any closing thoughts or that they want to say, um, and then we'll have a 10 minute break in between each candidate.
Okay. So the important notes, we're going to ask questions from every category. Remember the question that you asked, because we need to ask it to every candidate.
Correct.
Got it. And the bolded questions submitted by my colleagues are to take precedent.
Correct.
All right.
And feel free, if you have a question, a follow-up question to an answer, feel free to ask that.
Okay.
I will play timekeeper. And yeah. Everybody clear? Any questions?
Questions from anyone?
Oh, there's staff evaluation, there's evaluation form. So after you feel free to take notes on that form, check off whether they meet exceed, don't meet expectations based on that quality. At the end of the evening, I'll collect those and just compile that data and provide a summary.
And we do not put our names on this.
No, you do not. No, it's anonymous.
It's anonymous. Okay. Awesome.
All right.
Everybody good?
All right. All right. We'll go bring in our first.
Right.
What's that?
Normally there would be seven people sitting here. We have seven categories. We go through seven categories.
Yeah, we're just going to go through and go to the next category that is, yeah, as we go through them all.
So one, two, three, four, five, and then six, and then he'll ask another one from category seven.
And then I'll ask from the one before it, right?
So then you two will ask two questions, three questions.
Well, we might get through more or less depending on how they answer the questions.
Yeah, some of you might get through two questions, some three. It just really depends on timing.
Yeah. So we'll keep going until the. All right.
Can we do something about the?
Air.
Air condition?
Yeah, I would love it.
Like we went from.
Yeah.
Stephen.
To freezing.
Yeah.
Thank you so kindly. I'm sure. I'm sure. You know what? If somebody gets me a space heater, I'm gonna leave the air on all night. I don't care. I don't, I don't mind. Y'all hot over there? Oh, okay. It's freezing. All right. Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor and counsel, let me. And then I'll hand it over to Mayor and counsel to ask.
Thank you.
We'll save about five minutes at the end for any questions.
Okay.
Well, hello, counsel. Um, as you know, my name is Andrew Hellinger. Really appreciate the opportunity to interview for this position. I've lived in and around Ypsilanti for the past 20 years. And when I moved here, I knew that I, I, I found the place that I was supposed to live, the place that I was supposed to be. I went to Eastern for my undergrad. Then shortly after that, I met my wife working here, had two kids, got my graduate degree. And then I started working at the city. I met many people in, in my time in the city and I feel of great connected connectivity to the city. This to me is, is not really a job. It's more of a, a passion that I want the city to thrive, that I want its people to thrive and that I want us to push forward and be able to raise everyone up in the community and so that we can all prosper.
All right. So counsel will start our questions with Councilman Tucson.
Yes. Um, so what are five immediate actions you would take if given the job?
Five immediate actions would be, the first action is we have to get our staffing levels up to an appropriate amount in order to adequately address the needs of the city. Second, we have to focus on our facilities and increase their functionality and their safety. Third, we need to create sound processes. So staff now and staff into the future will understand how to move forward in certain situations. Fourth, uh, we need to really look at what our housing stock is, how we can make changes to really open up more affordability to other residents in the city. Um, and fifth, we need to provide economic development for, um, the Water Street site. We really need to push that, um, creating that additional tax revenue is, is, is important for the city to thrive.
Thank you.
Good evening. The city manager position requires you to respond to many requests in a short period of time. How do you ensure promptness, accuracy and courtesy under these conditions? What specifically do you do?
So when I receive a communication from a resident, I try to respond as quickly as possible. If I know the answer there, I will just give it to them. Um, if I do not, I will say, I will look into this for you. I will reach out to that specific department and try to get information regarding the topic in the communication. Um, I will relay that message to, um, to the individual. If it requires a little bit more time for research, I'm, I will make sure that that individual is updated. So they don't think that they were just left in the lurch. If needed, uh, myself, the individual and the department head that is over the issue that they're having will sit down and we'll try to understand their situation. We need to listen to them. We need to make sure they feel heard. Sometimes we're not going to be able to give them the result that they wish, but they should leave there with the information of why we cannot do that. So communication is a very big part of this. And just openness and transparency, but information is key to resolving any type of issue.
Thank you.
How would you handle a situation where two departments are at odds over how to best serve the community?
So first, I think you would speak with each department head individually and try to see something, uh, see it from their side. Get as much information as you can. And then everyone needs to sit down together and we need to have a frank, open discussion on how best to, to address the needs of the city. The department heads might not walk away feeling that they got what they want, but our motivation has to be to balance city resources. So we can adequately provide to the function of the city. So it's just about being open with each other, being respectful and being able to trust one another that we're working towards the same goal, which is the, um, which is the city and the residents.
Good evening. Do you have experience with the people centric as opposed to car centric city planning and design? And how would you approach such a project incrementally?
So we've actually in our complete streets plan, every new reconstruction has to have some type of non-motorized, uh, um, function to it. Um, I think really what you want to do is you first would start with a circulation plan, which I, I believe that we have or a non-motorized plan. And then we need to prioritize how best to implement that. So you would want to look through the plan and understand which will have the greatest impact right away. And then you would move forward with that project, try to get funding if, if available. And if that is successful and that makes connections, then you can build upon that. So I think it's important to prioritize something that will have the most immediate impact. So then the public will be more behind it. And if the public's behind it, it makes it really easy to expand the network of non-motorized transportation.
Well, hello. Good evening. Okay. So, uh, can you, uh, share a time when you were under extreme pressure? How did you handle it? And were you happy with the outcome? How did you care for yourself and the team?
So March 10th, 2020 was the presidential primary. The day following that, the, or actually at eight o'clock, the night the polls closed, the, the pandemic was declared. So this made it very difficult to really administer the election. So we had to reorganize, rethink how we were going to do things. The Secretary of State sent out notices for everyone to receive absentee ballot, which is, was incredibly important at that time. But we would now have thousands of requests coming in rather than a few hundred. So we had to allocate more time. We needed to have all hands on deck. The interesting thing about the city of Ypsilanti is a department heads, not just a department head. We're also a rank and file staff member, especially in the small departments. So everybody had to do everything. We had to allocate time and energy to everything and everybody needed to be responsible for that. That put a lot of stress on, um, employees and myself. But I find that if you are in the trenches with your employees, they will tend to work harder with you, not for you, but with you. I also tried to, uh, increase levity. We would, you know, play practical jokes on one another and really try to make it as fun as possible, even though it was, it was a daunting task that we were up against. We were able to successfully administer that election. Our account board was one of the first ones finished and we were the first, one of the first cities to report. But the thing is, we, we always have to keep in mind that we are not robots. Our employees are not robots. And we have to check in with one another and ensure that everyone's feeling okay. If they need a day, take a day. If that's going to help you be more productive in the future, we all need to look out for one another and check in with another, each other in order to make sure that we're good mentally and that we're able to complete the job.
Hello. How do you prioritize short and long-term goals and expenditures? It's a two-part question. Ypsilanti has a lot of ongoing projects such as Water Street that need to be completed before we can move on to newer and bigger projects.
So I think when prioritizing, you needed to do it in, in separate, like different tiers. Really, we need to look at what, what item has a safety issue behind it. Anything that creates a dangerous situation must be dealt with quickly. Next, we have to really look into what are things that we can get little wins out of, but will take less staff time. But having those out of the way can create opportunity to focus more energy on a larger topic, such as the development of Water Street. And then looking at those larger developments, those larger projects, you really need to break that down incrementally. You need to have a clear plan of, uh, focus on how you're going to, uh, uh, attack that objective. So you really want to get all of the individuals together, all the stakeholders and try to understand what tasks should be completed first. It has to be a collaborative effort in order to truly find the right path. We might need to hire consultants to provide public engagement. But these are all things that need to be addressed and they need to be addressed in a way that is strategic and will get us to the right pass, uh, path. Sometimes, um, an issue will arise that we only see the end goal rather than what needs to be done to achieve that goal. And I think it's all about prioritization and it's all about collaboration.
What transferable experience do you have with emergency management, especially as it relates to climate crisis mitigation and resilience?
So the city has been striving to become net zero before the pandemic. It's important to really keep your eye out there for grants that are going to becoming available. We have federal grants, state grants, and it's, it's, it's really, it's a, an evolving thing, sustainability. But we need to be on the cutting edge and, and the thing is with sustainability and emergency management there, we are not going to be able to do it ourselves. Our emergency management has to be at a more regional level. So we need to tap the county. We need to tap the state. We need to understand what changes are going to do in order for us to prepare for them. So we need to get the right people at the table, the experts, so we understand what's exactly could happen or will happen if certain changes are made. I think we need to be aware of how this will affect our residents. We need to create, um, places throughout the city that residents can go to in extreme, uh, extreme weather's, uh, situation. We need to be prepared because this isn't something that could happen. It's, it's going to happen and it has happened. I think we need to really work on how we deal with stormwater. And, uh, the other impacts that we're going to see that are only going to get worse. But I believe it to be very much a regional approach as well as a state, as well as a country, as well as a planet. Because the planet will live on without us. We will not.
Thank you. If there was one aspect of our government you could change, what would it be and why?
One aspect of the city of Ypsilanti government that I would change, and I am equating government to the, the people, the residents of this city, the electorate, because this is a democracy. So we really should be following their lead. I would like us to be able to sit down at a table together and really try to understand where people are coming from. I think a lot of times people get in their, their own perspective. And while you might disagree with somebody, you also can understand where they're coming from and you can respect those people's humanity and why they are, why they are so passionate about that. And if you sit down and you really listen, you might change your perspective or they might change theirs. I really just want us all to be able to work together. Cause that's, that's how you accomplish great things and we need to do that by listening to each other.
Thank you.
The city manager is often in a tug of war, residents, public, employees, elected officials, et cetera. What is your go-to strategy for dealing with conflict?
So my strategy to deal with conflict is first I understand what the conflict is or what the issue is. And then what I need to do is go to those departments and gather information, also gather information by the complaintant. Once I have this information, I'm not going to always understand why a department is functioning the way it is. But I go to the experts of that department and I understand that. And then I try to, I voice that to, to the individual. They might not like that, um, but the city code and state law is something that we need to follow. And perhaps they have a suggestion to, to better improve our ordinances to really make them more realistic in the world we're living in today. So I think it's important to make sure you have the information to address the conflict. And if not resolve the conflict, to make that person aware of why things are happening the way they are.
How do you nurture and manage a diverse team, whether that is in background or viewpoint?
So managing a diverse team is I, I look at it as not a challenge, but an opportunity. Having a diversity is meaning you're having a bunch of different perspectives at the table. That will lead to better solutions, better decision-making. Cause you have, when you have different perspective, different backgrounds, different ways of looking at the world, you can find solutions that are going to be beneficial towards the community at large, rather than just say a specific demographic. So I don't ever look at that as a challenge. I look at it as an opportunity to do better things.
All right. Um, can you describe a major project or idea that was implemented primarily because of your efforts? What were the biggest challenges and how did you overcome them?
So again, going back to the 2020 election, um, I was able to obtain a grant to help cover the costs of, of that election. I was able to purchase several scan tabulators, which are the machines you put the ballot into for the use of our count board. That comp board was able to be more efficient because they were able to separate each, um, each precinct's ballots rather than putting several in one machine. That makes it easier to catch mistakes as they come up. It makes it easier to make sure your numbers are on. It makes it easier to basically go through the, uh, lists of voters there and ensure that everything is, is, everything is going the way that it's supposed to. We were also able to obtain a lot of PPE equipment for our election inspectors. We were able to purchase 50 more double, um, double voting booths to ensure that people could navigate or, um, move through the line quickly, um, to minimize exposure time. And then on top of that, we were able to fund the, um, the five-year insurance for the new machines at the end of the grants period.
How do you handle political, political sensitive, sensitive issues with staff, council and the public?
Well, again, that, that goes down to the fact that it, we are all going to have political ideas. We will all have, you know, maybe ideas that aren't even political. And that doesn't mean that those ideas are bad. It just means that people are coming through life in a different way than, than yourself. So it's, it's all about listening and it's all about communicating what, what is expected of staff and concerning these political ideologies. Many times that is not necessarily a place at city hall. You are, you are an agent of the city. So you really, at times, especially concerning the public, you should keep your opinions to yourself. Counsel is a political entity, so its job is to have opinions about politics. So it's staff's job to ensure that they have the information needed in order to make, make correct decisions or informed decisions. The public is the public has the opportunity to voice their, their, their politics to city council. And through their voices, we can understand the needs of the community and we take that information in and we make decisions based on that, on those principles. So it's, it's, it's again, it's just information, what you do with that information and how you implement programs is, is really what the job of staff should be.
Given that the city of Ypsilanti has the highest property taxes in the area, what strategy would you use to decrease its burden on residents?
This is a very difficult question to answer. The city has, um, a third of the city is tax exempt, which, which will drive up the tax rate in order for us to adequate, adequately provide services. So we either need, well, we need to do both. We need to create more revenue streams, which can be difficult, especially for a landlocked city with us with, and, and there's only so much space to develop. But we really need to address this, that we need that additional revenue in order to ensure the longevity of our city. Next, we really need to put a lot of pressure on the state to provide the, the transfers that are supposed to go to the city. We need to discourage unfunded mandates. That's just a way for the state to say, we did this. Now you figure it out. And we need to really put pressure on our state representation to ensure that if they're going to pass legislation that will directly impact a, a, a local government, there needs to be funding sources in order to adequately implement that program. But yeah, it's, it's, it's really going to come down to, um, different types of development, different commercial, trying to attract more industry into our city, um, things like that. It's, it's, there's a lot of different ways for economic development. And I would like to say that would be easy to release the, the tax burden. But with, with a third of our city being tax exempt, it makes it very difficult to adequately provide services.
Tell us about your experience with addressing affordable housing issues. How would you approach this issue if you were the next city manager? How would you approach this issue if you were the next city manager? And what are your accomplishments, if any, in this area?
So my accomplishments in affordable housing were largely during the community benefits agreement processes for 220 North Park and nine four five eight four five Clark Road. And really my, my assistance in those processes was really to help those bodies form proper motions in order for those to be effective in the CBA. In terms of current housing affordability, this is, this is going to continue to be an issue for the city, county, state and the country as a whole. A city our size cannot adequately address this. We need to leverage the county. We need to leverage the eastern Washtenaw County jurisdictions, the, the western side. We need to create partnerships so we can address these problems. They're not just here. And we also want to be careful not to concentrate poverty too much, because once you concentrate poverty, that poverty is cyclical and people have difficulties rising out of it. So we need to spread, spread affordable housing throughout the county so we can have different socioeconomic levels living next to each other and really rising each other up for different reasons. The way that schools are run is by property taxes. If you have a, an area that is, you know, has a great concentration of poverty, it makes it difficult to fund the schools adequately, which again creates a cyclical environment to continue poverty rather than change that for those individuals.
If you are appointed the next city manager, what is your plan for the first hundred and eighty days?
My plan for the first hundred and eighty days is staffing, staffing, staffing. Followed by updating facilities, creating greater functioning facilities that are safe, that employees can come into and be proud of, that we can really show the good things that the city can accomplish when it works together. We need to create processes that will assist in making better decisions, assist in making sure that employees know what's expected of them. So really the first hundred and eighty days, I would just focus on recruitment and strategies to update our facilities.
How do you ensure transparent and effective communications?
How do I ensure transparent communications?
And effective communication.
And effective transparent communications. Well, I can say that I am an open book, so I'm, I'm going to tell anybody anything they want to know. But I think it's important that the organization has a clear understanding of what transparency means. And I think we need to do a better job of kind of understanding what the public thinks transparency is, what council thinks transparency is, and then what we can adequately, adequately with the staff levels that we have, provide this information. I think there's a lot of mistrust in government right now, so transparency is, is paramount. But we need to strategize a way that we can effectively communicate in a manner that people trust at the same time it doesn't dedicate too much staff time that we're, we're letting other projects go through. So really I would start with, we need an external communication plan and we need an internal communication plan. A lot of times messages don't get to the employees that need to, need to know those things. We need to have a clear communication plan externally, so the public can look at that and they can say, okay, this is what they can expect. I think it's just creating expectations of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And it's going to take, it'll take time, but through that, I think we'll be able to rebuild that trust, just as long as we are consistent in the practice of those plans.
All right. So can you describe a time when you failed in a leadership role and the lesson you learned? Did you implement changes?
So I can go into the, the recent past, the 599 South Mansfield purchase. I failed in the way that I didn't follow a sound process. And as a result of that, it, it, you know, it caused disruption in the public, it made staff angry. And, you know, I take accountability for that. And the time between then, we're beginning to strategize on how we're going to improve situations for the Department of Public Services, how we're going to address functionality while those, while those changes are being made. We've DPS has, has gotten two, two quotes from different engineering firms on costs associated with updating those, the buildings in most need. There has been a phase one complete. And we're trying to put together a work session so we can adequately describe our plans moving forward, so the public is aware as well as council and mostly the staff members. So they are understanding that administration is moving in a way to make their building safe and make them have pride in their facilities.
How do you determine what projects and initiatives are worth investing time and resources in?
Well, that goes back to prioritization. I, I look at it as what issues are safety related, followed by things that will have the greatest impact and things that you are smaller tasks, but when you complete those, it will help you on a, a, a larger project. So it's, it's really, it's about relations to, to different projects that you, again, you would implement incrementally and it's important to understand what the information, the data that would support, okay, if I do these three things, it's going to help us effectively address this. So it's, it's just a matter of information, but always start with safety and then get a, a, understand a bird's eye view of the next project, but then also get to the micro level and understanding what, what smaller tasks are going to help you to achieve a greater objective.
How do you build effective working relationships with people from a wide range of backgrounds, education levels, positions within the organization, community members, et cetera?
I think you need, need to meet people where they are. You need to get out into the community and make yourself be seen to go to merchants association meetings, go to neighborhood meetings. You have to be out in the community. You have to be a face that people know, that people trust. And you have to go at it with a mindset as we're all people. It doesn't, education, background, it doesn't matter. Ultimately, we all have similar goals. And you look towards the, the things that bind us together as humans. And that's how I think you, you go about creating those, those relationships with community members and the community at large.
What is your experience in the area of budget and finance? It's a couple of parts to this question. So again, what is your experience in the area of budget and finance? Have you been involved directly in the mechanics of budgeting, budget presentations and meetings and monitoring the budget? Please explain.
Since 2019, I've been part of the budget committee. I've met with department heads and created, you know, budget goals for that given fiscal year. I've assisted in discussions through what our budget goals should be. I do think that we should amend the way that we go about budgeting. I think it's good to be conservative, but when you're overly conservative, you miss projects because you're trying to save money. We need to have a better strategy of how to maximize our funding. I think when you, when you act too conservatively, you just leave stuff on the table and then the prices go up the next year. So I think we need to be realistic in our conservativeness. But I think we need to really think about opportunity lost when we're, when we are becoming too conservative with our budget.
Thank you.
What types of community and economic development projects have you worked on in the past and what were the outcomes they brought about?
Economic development projects, I've worked in the past. And more on the, the outside of that, but I would, I would assist in making sure that I understand what those projects are, the Michigan HQ, and trying to understand what those, what is going into that. I've been a part of the Triple TA meetings regarding the, the, the bus depot. I'm trying to really immerse myself in all of the developments that are occurring in the city now since my previous role was, was more of a, a basically someone watching things happen and making sure that it's recorded correctly. Which through that I've gained a lot of knowledge. But now I'm trying to immerse myself in those projects so I can really understand the mechanics. But I think what is most important is the leadership you put in community services, that they have adequate understanding of economic development. We need people in those positions that can fill the gaps of myself and other people. It's, the city manager should definitely immerse themselves in these projects, but ultimately it's choosing the right team to adequately go through and ensure that our economic development is done equitably and is done effectively.
This will be our last question.
I asked this just to be fair to other candidates. When you become a city manager, how will you go about getting to know the community and building relationships with stakeholders? Who are those stakeholders and the business owners?
Sure. I mean, really, I'm, I'm a part of the community, so I've been here for twenty years. I know people's names and faces, faces. I know a lot of the business owners. And when I became city manager, I, I went around to all the downtown businesses. I went to the depot town businesses. I know the merchant groups. And I've, I've known the, the, the religious community. I've, I've worked with, you know, Second Baptist through administration of elections. But it's really, it's just getting your face out there and understanding, you know, the neighborhood associations, understanding the, the merchants associations, understanding the county officials. And just trying to make as many connections and do it in a way that promotes integrity and puts a positive spin on the city and its leadership. So it's, it's going out there and being a steward of the community.
Thank you. All right. So with these last five minutes, is there anything that you haven't shared with us that you would like us to know?
No, not specifically. I do have a couple of questions. And these will take a little while, but I, I think they're important to ask. So this is going to be for each of you. What do each of you feel are the biggest issues facing Ypsilanti?
All right. Well, you know, I'll start. There are several really big competing issues right now, I would say. The first one, because it's so current, is our facility. So the DPS facility and the safety of our, our staff and employees and our colleagues, and also making sure that services are adequately, you know, completed for the residents. I think the other piece of it is just our, the affordable housing crisis across the county and our unhoused population is, is very important and something that I think we should put our focus on and really collaborate with our partners to make sure that all hands are on deck. Because we know that we cannot lift and do this alone. And then I'd say Water Street, because again, our tax base, that's one of the ways that we can relieve some of the pressure of the really high taxes in Ypsilanti, if we can get Water Street, some shovels in the ground there. So those are three main ones for me.
Okay. So for me, I would say it's definitely the facilities, as the mayor has said, and making sure, like she said, that the residents get the service that they need. Also, I would, I would say that it is our, our houseless community, because we definitely have a lot of things going on in our city with them. And also the, the Water Street development.
So I agree with what folks have said so far. I would say that I think some of the biggest issues facing the city are, really are gaps in our current resources and getting to where we need for future population trends, both in terms of population growth trends, generational trends in terms of what people are looking for within their living space and amenities that we have here.
Mine would be along the lines of increasing where we can our tax base to continue to provide the services that we have and expand things that we may want to do that we don't have the ability to do so currently because of some of those limitations. And then also along with that, our staffing levels within the city itself. Without the staff, there's no services, right? So being able to get ourselves in a place that we can retain and onboard to bring up service levels to where we want them to be.
I would say the unhoused community and communication amongst each other and the city.
I was going to say communication. So everything that has been said, I mean, the obvious things, water, street, housing, you know, facilities. But communication is huge. That has been a problem since I've been on council and it, and to your point, that needs to be, there needs to be a, a plan externally and internally. There's been.
Well, a couple of minutes again. So again, for each of you, what leadership structure do each of you most benefit from?
I'm like, I'm not sure if you want to go first.
You could go first.
So I, I prefer a, a leadership structure that's really where everyone brings their strengths forward as an offering to the team. And where we could kind of step in, step out as, as necessary. And collaborative leadership. And where I can see that kind of happening across. So recognizing that while we have a very hierarchical structure, that if we, that there's ways to flatten it.
Honestly, in not different words, but same exact thing. I'm collaborative. I think that the, the true measure of leadership is your ability to listen and to follow. And so, yeah, I would love to see less of the hierarchy, even though we know that those things are in place for a reason, but just to be able to work collectively together.
I'll go with, first thing that jumped. I'll go with, um, first thing that jumped out was collaborative when these two have also said that, um, it's, I see that as easier to get buy-in, um, when you take that stance as a leader. And not clear whether the question is aimed at the, the relationship between council and, and and the city manager or the city manager and staff or council and staff, but I think in all cases that would be the priority.
It would go either way.
I would say the same thing collaboratively, but also I would want a, a leader that when he sees maybe some of his employees are struggling to be able to pick them up.
I'll also agree with the collaborative leadership structure.
Bring us home, Evan.
Um, someone that can play to, I think people's strengths, um, and be open to, you know, multiple ways of doing things. Um, and then I think being able to present, you know, strong recommendations or, um, based on fact and knowledge and research.
Well, the, the last thing I have is I'm, I'm very humbled to be sitting in the seat. You know, I, like I've said, I, I love this community and I really want to see it thrive and only strengthen our residents into the future. So I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we got 10 minutes. Well, more like eight. Now you can go ahead. Good evening.
Well, thank, thank you all for having me. I was, uh, very excited when I saw the, this posting and I feel like Ypsilanti is like, I compliment my, my skills. I'm looking, I'm sorry.
Lift the mic.
We have these same ones. I'm, you know, uh, Vassar's council chamber, I'm just always, you know, kind of talking out loud and everybody hears me normally, but, um, the, just very excited to be here. I think that Ypsilanti is, uh, just the, the next, you know, step in, in growth for me professionally, uh, and career wise. And I think it's my, uh, like my management style, my leadership style, uh, complements well with, I think what staff needs and, and, and growth. And, uh, just developing that team of, uh, togetherness. Uh, other than that, yeah, I'm born and raised Bay City. I served on the elected side, uh, just like you folks. I had my name on a ballot. It's actually what, uh, got me into, uh, just public service and going in that administrative side. I, um, uh, maybe it wasn't the best choice, but I was in a, like a, a three in one program with Northwood University. I was going to do like accounting or management. I was about to, uh, cross over, uh, from Delta to Northwood and I decided to change all up. I changed my degree course to political science. Uh, and then, so I thought I'd, you know, run for city office and like you folks did and, and, uh, you know, I learned very fast that a political science degree, they don't actually teach you local government, uh, and how to, how to, you know, be a, a council member or, uh, you know, just any of it. It's all theory and everything. So, uh, at that point I decided to go back to college, get a master's degree and, and, and kind of move in that direction of the administration of government and spend my passion since. So I'll just, again, just reiterate that I'm excited to be here and thank you all for taking the time with me.
Thank you. So we're just going to go around Robin and ask you questions. So we'll start with Councilman Tucson.
Thank you. Um, so what are five immediate actions you would take if given the job?
So, uh, first off, I think, uh, um, I mean, work, I think the number one thing worked towards, uh, uh, filling vacancies, staff vacancies, giving folks, uh, you know, maybe internally the, uh, chance to grow, uh, uh, from positions that they already are in. Uh, one thing that I strive for in my current role is, uh, I think, uh, I think the, my position is the most redundant position there is in the city. Uh, you know, uh, there, um, I think that I, I should have, my goal is to develop my, my, uh, department head staff to be able to take over. Any one of them should be able to take over at any point in time. If, you know, if I walked out, got hit by a bus, somebody should be able to fill in my seats. And then they should have somebody that can fill into their spot as well. So, uh, uh, your number one thing is probably staff development.
Thank you.
Um, then another, uh, another item is, you know, look, leverage, uh, look for opportunities, uh, for, you know, your folks have, have goals that you've listed out. Uh, I firmly believe that you, uh, it's as a steward of the budget to leverage assets that we have for more assets for, uh, you know, state, federal money. Uh, so, and then to, I always kind of go to a point to where I don't even, uh, I'm not even leveraging our money. I'm just asking people for things. Uh, I, I always, I have one yard sign left from when I ran for office. And I always like to point to that when I'm asking, you know, uh, asking folks to donate things to the city. Uh, in Vassar, we've done a tremendous work with, uh, improving our parks with free, and well, it's free to the city, but donated, it wasn't free to everybody. Somebody paid for it. But, uh, uh, we were able to either leverage assets of the city or get donated funds. Um, so that's the next thing. Um, and then, uh, look for, uh, opportunities for savings in the current budget. Um, uh, to get that, that projected shortfall, smaller. Um, I think that dipping into fund balances is okay at a point, but, um, you know, if it's, you know, one-time planned things, but it can't be a forever thing. So I'll look for budgetary savings. Another thing, um, getting out in the community, uh, and meeting folks is another piece that I would like to, you know, first start on, uh, getting into. And then, uh, lastly, so was it just kind of doubling back on that staff development, just really, uh, I didn't look for opportunities for, uh, uh, training and stuff for staff.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. The city manager position requires you to respond to many requests in a short period of time. How do you ensure promptness, accuracy and courtesy under these conditions? What specifically do you do?
So I used to be a, a union rep for, uh, Meyer employees and it was uh, something that's been ingrained in me, uh, from those days. Uh, we had a 24-hour response. We had to respond to our members within 24 hours. So if, uh, I have, uh, um, you know, members of the, uh, you know, of the community asking me questions, I was all that rule is, uh, at minimum of 24-hour response, even if I don't have the answer, then I'll give them a little, hey, I'm working on this. And then, uh, uh, go forward from there. So.
Thank you.
I use a lot of sticky notes too. That's another thing here. My desk is everywhere.
How would you handle a situation where two departments are at odds over how to best serve the community?
Um, you know, I think, uh, it's just really important to, uh, build, uh, the, uh, a team of, uh, trust, uh, within the, uh, uh, the, the several departments in the city. Um, yeah, and mentioned this earlier about, uh, every day, it's, it's sometimes it's, it does seem excessive, but, uh, every day my staff and I, we all have coffee. Uh, it's like from eight to nine in the morning, we're all, uh, kind of just together. Um, and, uh, that there has solved any sort of, uh, any type of animosities that, that there has come up between staff members. Like that has been, uh, kind of a, uh, something that it's overcame that barrier. Cause folks are, uh, you know, we're, we're just with each other more often. We see each other. We talk to each other. We talk about our, you know, families, the lives and everything. So that if, you know, if that building up togetherness doesn't work, then we just all have to have a conversation and, and, uh, get the expectations aligned, um, going forward.
Do you have experience with people centric as opposed to car centric city planning and design? And how would you approach such a project incrementally?
Uh, so I, I have, uh, experience in, and it probably is similar to what you folks would have in it, more on my time, uh, serving on the board in Bay City. We were uh, really steering towards that, uh, direction within Bay City to create more of a walkability. Uh, in Vassar, not so much. It's a, it's kind of more rural town. So it hasn't been uh, a priority of the council to go that direction, but understand the concepts and, and, and the, the need uh, for a more walkable, more pedestrian friendly city, especially when you have a major university within the town.
Good evening. Um, can you describe a time when you were under extreme pressure? How did you handle it? And were you happy with the outcome? How did you care for yourself and the?
Yeah. Um, so, you know, of, of my entire time in Vassar, I think, uh, yeah, I don't think my job was ever, ever in jeopardy, but I had, we had a, um, uh, we have a water project going on right now. It's a, about a $9 million infrastructure improvement project. Well, it had, we're replacing 3.3 miles of water main, putting in, uh, a new well and then putting in some water meters. Well, the, uh, one of the well, there's only like certain companies that can dig a municipal sized well, and they were backing up their timeline. And the state pulled the project from us and the city had already spent about $700,000 of just, you know, water fund money, general fund money, uh, on that project. And the state said, well, you're not getting your nine million now. So, uh, too bad. Um, they wouldn't work with us. Uh, I, you know, I kept my council aware of everything that was happening. Uh, but you know, that was, there's a point that I was like, well, you know, if, if the state doesn't, if we can't get the state to correct or to change their minds, then, you know, I'd then we'd wasted $700,000 and figured that I'd be on that unemployment line. So, uh, went, I, uh, contacted our folks at Eagle and said, you know, explained what this is going to do to us. Um, they said, well, can't do anything. So then I contacted, you know, our, our state electeds, the governor's office. Uh, and, uh, within, uh, minutes it was, oh, you guys are good. You get your money. So, um, you know, generally, uh, uh, high stress, high pressure situations, I kind of run pretty even keel during, um, but as you, you had asked, like, what do I do for my own self-care? It's be with my daughters. That, that, that's, uh, my going home at night. That, that's my self-care, being with them, playing with them and, and, uh, I've got a five and a seven-year-old. So.
I think another part of the question was, how did you care for yourself and the team?
Oh, and the team. Well, uh, my, uh, that project kind of really more fell on, on to me. It was going to be my, my issue. My DBW director was a little concerned. Um, but conveniently enough for him, it was, uh, deer season. So he was spending a bunch of time in the woods and not dealing with it. So, um, I guess, uh, it was that.
Okay. So I'll have a two-part question. How do you prior, prioritize short and long-term goals and expenditures? Ypsilanti has a lot of, of ongoing projects such as Water Street that need to be completed before we can move on to newer and bigger projects.
Mm-hmm. Uh, you know, I think the hard part of government is nothing is very quick. So, um, you know, it's, so it's all, it's always balancing that. You got projects that are about to be ending and then other, you know, irons in the fire waiting to go. Um, you know, I, you know, for, for myself and my organization and my tracking of that, I, I keep, um, kind of like this ungodly, um, spreadsheet of current projects. Uh, uh, and I, I update the council on everything that I'm doing weekly. Uh, and, uh, I let them know on things that are, uh, anything that I try, even when I fail. Like I'm just letting everybody know that we're, you know, we're trying at this, we're going at this. So, so managing those goals, I take, I take the goals of what my council would like to see and, you know, internalize that and see, um, uh, run with the goals of the council half and then kind of throw in, uh, some other community growth things on top of it. Um, so as far as, you know, the, uh, as you said, the Water Street project, just be, you know, working towards finishing that, but ensuring that there's other things coming down the pipe.
Excuse me. What transferable experience do you have with emergency management, especially as it relates to climate crisis mitigation and resilience?
Um, so, uh, when I, uh, first got the job in Vassar, uh, you know, the one thing, I don't know, maybe, does anybody know anything about Vassar at all? No, a little bit too far out of the, out of the orb, but i- in like, you know, in the Great Lakes Bay region, every people were like, doesn't it flood there? Uh, cause it does, it floods. Um, we've, uh, had, uh, some tremendous, uh, floods, uh, in the past and the, and that, so for whatever reason, they decided to build the city in just a poor spot. Um, so, uh, we've worked with, uh, 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 you know, FEMA on different regulations. We've improved some of our, our flood, uh, mitigation. Uh, projects are, um, we have so, like a couple of berms, we have these big floodgates in town that, uh, we ensure, uh, that are always in good working order. And then what keeps us accountable on that is, uh, we have a insurance rating that we have to do this intensive, uh, documentation uh, every year and then every four years, it's this big re, re, uh, adjusting. So I think, you know, it's just, it's all important stuff to, uh, ensure that the city is sustainable in the future.
Right. If there was one aspect of our government you could change, what would it be and why?
I don't know. I mean, I, I think, um, I think focusing, uh, um, the staff retention and growth is probably the aspect that I would.
Thank you.
The city manager is often in a tug of war, residents, employees, elected officials, et cetera. What is your go-to strategy for dealing with conflict?
It's usually based on always communicating with everybody. So, um, there, um, there's not a, um, I, we could call any of my council members up right now. They know intimately of like what I'm working on. My staff knows what we're working on. Uh, the community is kind of the tricky part because, you know, you tell them what we're working on and they, for whatever, they blanket out. I don't know why. Um, but, uh, a lot of folks in the community, uh, do know. So I often do, uh, uh, it kind of took this as, uh, something I did when I was an elected, uh, when I was an elected official, I did coffee hours. So I, I do them as a city manager. And so I have different businesses in Vassar that host me and and hang out with them for a morning, drinking coffee, talking to people. I drink a lot of coffee. I guess I've noticed. Um, uh, but you're just, uh, that has been, uh, very effective on just, you know, letting folks know on, uh, you know, different things that are going on in the community. But it's, it's all based on just always, you know, I, I can talk for a very long time. So, uh, you know, talking to different people. Uh, easy thing for me to do. And I, I try to make sure that, uh, folks are aware of, uh, all progress in the city, good or bad. Uh easy thing for me to do and I I try to make sure that uh folks are aware of uh all progress in the city, good or bad.
How do you nurture and manage a diverse team, whether that is in background or viewpoints?
Yeah, I think uh just in having uh buy-in from people on on things is that uh. Is that best part of it, I mentioned this earlier, um. You know, I had a a big uh, my my police chief wants wanted us to like secure off city hall. Uh right now, any any resident, member of the public, they can walk right into my office and they do sometimes. Uh or they can walk into like a uh council payable, like the clerks, all that, just it's a hallway and two doors. And so we put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to put a secure uh secure door there. Um yeah, and that was kind of on the fence and I thought it's kind, it's a lot of money for just that. Um but you know, something council wanted, something my police chief wanted, so we got some bids and. Uh and then I was just bouncing those ideas off my front office staff who live in the city, they're uh out of all my staff, I. They, I, most folks live out in the surrounding communities, they don't actually live in the cities, but these two, they own homes, they live in the city, they're taxpayers. And like, I just don't think we need to spend that kind of money, and it was interesting, those first people that said. You know, let's not spend this type of money on that, and they're the ones that deal with it and they're the taxpayers in the community, so. You're just even those little, uh that's a big decision, uh but you're bouncing those ideas off the folks. Uh that's what I do, I never make a decision just unilaterally, I try to like bring a collaborative effort. Even down to my part-time, you know, utility billing clerks, uh they know, uh they they bounce things off them all the time. So that that's built for me, uh that buy-in, and I think that that's an in important thing when you're talking about, you know, just equity. Um uh in inclusions.
Can you describe a major project or idea that was implemented primarily because of your efforts? What were the biggest challenges and how did you overcome them?
A couple of things, but I'll stick with the uh, you know, one of the things I I'm pretty proud of is. When I started in Vassar, I had thirteen full-time employees. It's it's not really that comparable to Ypsilanti, but um but uh now we're up to twenty. Uh and a big piece of that is seeing opportunities to uh partner with um. You know, other neighboring governments or other types, so um. You know, we'll talk about our police department, we have a twenty-four hour police department, but that's that's one person, one officer. Every hour of the day, it's not, we don't have multiple people on a shift, it's a small town, so uh we would have uh, you know, twenty-four seven coverage. So the maximum amount of police that we had on at any given time was two, my police chief and the day officer. Uh right now, during the day, we have or we've doubled that. Uh because we've uh saw an opportunity to uh get the uh our neighboring township to sign a contract with us. And now we police the with the the township, and then we also had an opportunity to work with our schools and get a school resource officer placed. Um in in the school. So the the police department was one thing, but I think my uh my favorite thing that I've done. Uh you know, we have a wastewater treatment plant and we needed a B license operator for the facility. Couldn't find anybody, we're offering people uh close to a hundred grand a year to to take over our plant. Everybody said no cuz they can make more money elsewhere, and I found the opportunity to partner with uh Buena Vista Township, which is. Uh in another county, it's not even neighboring to us, they needed the same thing, so we partnered. So we share one person twenty hours a week, we each pay sixty K. Uh and so now I have my budgets better off because I'm getting what I needed, uh so that was a. I think it's just a really great accomplishment that we're able to do there, uh kind of the process, though, I had a somebody that we. That my former director was not um. He was just not a good fit, he couldn't, he wasn't good at managing people, I don't, uh I don't accept. Um I staff yelling at subordinate staff, not something that I'm okay with. He would yell at his staff and swear at them, uh so that was a not gonna work for me, so. We uh so we had to transition him out and then find something else and uh we couldn't find anything else, so we had to keep this guy around. For a little while and it wasn't. Uh so we were able to find that other government, merge a position and then. Uh get rid of uh, you know, that's a problem, that that's a morale issue, you know, and.
How do you handle politically sensitive issues with staff, council and the public?
I mean, I. Uh yeah, I think sometimes there's just no way to not talk about some things, um. You know, I threw my uh tenure, uh I didn't, I never, I didn't think I was gonna have uh. You know, you you I'm close with my staff, I I know my uh their kids' names, I know. Uh just a lot of details about them and you you don't think about the um what you're sending. The types of dangers that are like our staff face, so you know, I had a an officer involved shooting a couple of months back in August. Um you know, it was one of those things that I never would have thought I was gonna have to deal with, I don't know why, you know, it was just. Uh rose colored glasses, I suppose, thinking that I wasn't gonna have to deal with with that, um. And uh you know, that was, is a uh. Big deal, I didn't expect my reaction to it and uh but we we managed through it, um everybody is fine. Uh thank thankfully, um and uh we're still dealing with some of the fallouts. So it it's, but there's, you know, a lot of that stuff, it's just, we know about it, but we can't discuss it, so.
Given that the city of Ypsilanti has the highest property taxes in the area, what strategy would you use to just decrease this burden on residents?
Uh it's it it is significant, um. Yeah, I think that uh uh prioritizing projects that are multi-jurisdictional, so if we're. Um uh you know, to to try to find cost savings and in in that stuff, so like what I've done, um yeah. Consumers' energy was coming through Vassar and they were gonna tear up a bunch of road, so we were ensuring that. We went through and we ensured that we were gonna do that road when they were doing that project, so then we kind of worked together to do find cost-saving measures. The other thing is what I kind of mentioned earlier is. Uh yeah, I've, in Vassar, I've never funded a project fully off of city taxpayers. I've always leveraged what we have for more, um and and uh, yeah, I mentioned that I'm, I do this a whole lot. Uh uh and uh, you know, beg, borrow, leave for things, um you know, I submitted in. I submit for a congressional appropriation every time I can. Um yeah, there's no reason not to, they're very simple applications and that's the way the federal government spends, it's sometimes it's just money that can fall down on you. Maybe, um so uh like I I have a project right now, uh a public safety building, we asked the federal government for. Six million dollars for an appropriation and what we're told is it's in the house budget, and if they ever pass a budget. We got it, so uh things like that, I'm always looking for opportunities to leverage what we have or get free stuff.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about your experience with addressing affordable housing issues? How would you approach the issue if you were the next city manager and what are your accomplishments in this area, if any?
Uh you know, we don't have a whole lot in in Vassar, but uh what I have been, we just started working with. Uh a local developer, there hasn't, there hasn't been uh new housing or any housing developed uh within Vassar for years. Um man, I think it's. What what's happened is that uh folks that want to live in that community that might want to move up to that next level house, they're not able to. So they, that's kind of suppressed that housing market, we're looking at opportunities, the state has a lot of programs right now for like the missing middle. And stuff uh to alleviate that and so that um we're working at uh to do that in Vassar and then also. Uh the goal is to, if we can alleviate that middle piece that uh those lower um. Uh uh the lower housing will free up and then we'll be able to have uh more opportunities for folks.
Thank you.
If you are appointed the city manager, what is your plan for the first one hundred and eighty days?
Uh we're, you know, first off, uh uh you know, get to know you folks, set up goal sessions, I know that you folks are doing goal sessions. Uh interesting time, but uh you know, meet with you is what I wanted to develop that, like what you want to see. Uh and then you can get into the community and and folks, I'm, you know, uh I. I've not spent, uh I, you know, used to my job before Vassar, um we. Uh my first year there, we had the uh the Michigan Works Office here. Uh and so I spent some time down here back then, but have not spent a tremendous amount of time uh down here, so I'd like to just, you know, and. Get myself within the community, meet folks, uh meet staff, um and you folks.
How do you ensure transparent and effective communication?
So I uh so are you referencing with everybody or with council or?
Take it where you want to go.
Um so I I email um my council every Friday. It's uh and it's it's all my, what what I've been doing for the week, and then if there's anything like uh extra, like during the week, I, you know, like a. You know, exciting thing, I let them know prior to, but I uh I email them out. Uh my department heads, I talk to them daily, uh and I actually talk to most of my staff daily. And then as far as like the community, we uh Vassar, when I started there, we did a um. Uh quarterly water bill, so we were only mailing these people once, once a uh cor- four times a year. So we changed the bill to be uh monthly, uh and then we were able to then mail them a newsletter every single month. Just with keeping them updated on on things that are going on with the city, uh yeah, so it'll have a big section on like what I'm doing. And then also uh just just information things from staff.
Can you describe a time when you failed in a leadership role and a lesson you learned? Did you implement changes?
When uh uh when I started in Vassar, I had a lot of uh tech projects that the previous manager had uh going. Uh and some were council priorities, they they wanted them, uh we had this uh safe routes to school program. Which is is wonderful, I was gonna put all these uh new sidewalks within within the town, um and uh. It just, we, twenty twenty happened and prices went up and it, we couldn't, we couldn't, you know, make the dollars work. Uh yeah, so that that was a failure on my part, is I I couldn't, I couldn't justify to council why we do that. So we we ended up scrapping it, we spent money on it, we scrapped it, um but as far as like leading my. Leading my staff, um you know, we had a a kind of a really big setback, I. Uh we. Uh we were training a gentleman to eventually take over leadership in our police department, we had made him a sergeant, centered a lot of schools. Um I guess, and without recognizing the fact that that's not really what he wanted. I think he was uh accepting the dollars and that's what he he really wanted and. And uh you know, failure on my part was really to not recognize that fact that he was, you know, not comfortable with the leadership. And uh he ended up leaving uh and going to uh another unit of government for uh more pay and less work. And uh you know, we were left without that middle management in our newly, you know, bloated police department and. Uh it was really, it was, it was unfortunate because that was, we spent a lot of time and energy and they should have recognized that sooner. Um that it wasn't something that he really wanted.
How do you determine what projects and initiatives are worth investing time and resources in?
So I throw, I I I try to do a lot of things, um so I gen- like right now, uh uh in Vassar, I have a lot of irons in the fire. Uh and sometimes it's just getting conversations started uh to see uh if things will work. Uh but I'm, we're usually willing to try most things uh until a point to where, I mean, I'm not gonna waste money on it, though. So I think uh for here, my my goal would be to prioritize uh uh. Projects and tasks that are gonna complement each other, so um as I said earlier, it's, you know, if we're gonna um. Tear up a uh, you know, do a road and not the uh, you know, the right way of the sidewalks with it or any other infrastructure with it, then that's not gonna be a priority. You're gonna, you wanna lay overlay uh multiple uh. Projects and see what's the best, the best fit and what can we leverage our assets for more.
Okay, how do you build effective working relationships with people from a wide range of backgrounds, education levels, positions within the organization? Community members and et cetera?
I think uh. You're. You're like bringing this up quite a bit, but it's that um. The foundations of my management style i- is what builds those effective relationships and that's this, that. That care of my staff and that wanting to develop my staff and and uh, you know, I've never really. Um had in an issue with folks of of different uh backgrounds, experiences. Uh I uh maybe sometimes asshole uh to um. Maybe personal questioning, I just like to hear people's stories and it was like when you're, you're out knocking doors campaigning, I'd be the uh. Uh I need, I probably should have had somebody that was helping me campaign because I've just sit at people's houses, their coffee table. Uh talk with them for an hour and, you know, I should have been knocking on more doors, but I I love that interaction with folks within the community and just. Find out their stories and uh and where we can work together, partner and grow.
Thank you.
Right. What is your experience in the area of budget and finance? Have you been involved directly in the mechanics of budgeting, budget presentations at meetings and monitoring the budget? Please explain.
Uh yeah, so uh the benefit of uh uh managing a small government is it's every, every hat you wear. Um so the the budget is documented that I oversee uh on a daily basis. Um my uh my clerk treasurer does a lot of um, you know, the back. Then she enters it into the, you know, BSNA and all that stuff, but uh the the projects, the budgetary goals, the uh. Um ensuring that we're not overspending, that that all falls onto me, um and then also. Uh you know, a couple of big things that I I did right away, we were uh in underfunded pension system, uh. It was a, they had closed it in two thousand thirteen, uh so we actually, we did a pension bond. Uh that was uh something that I did, the the first big thing I did in Vassar was that pension bond, so we. We were ninety-five percent funded, we took advantage of, you know, low interest rates, so it was a smaller liability, but we bonded uh um. About four million dollars, uh and then put that in, you know, the the hopes is that that MERS return is higher than. Three point two five percent, so I, we gave significant savings to the city's budget uh financially there. And then the other thing that we. And then the other thing that we did, we have a, a lot of idle money just, just sitting there. We had it in like CD accounts that were gaining no interest. So we hired a financial firm to manage that money for us. So then we're seeing better, better returns. Uh, for, you know, then we were getting like, you know, one percent or whatever on a million dollars is fine, but it could, it could have grew better.
Thank you.
What types of community and economic development projects have you worked on in the past and what were the outcomes they brought about?
Um, the uh, we, we've had a uh, forty-four million dollar investment in an old uh, uh, industrial foundry within Vassar. Um, it's a, it, it's a big marijuana development, honestly, but it's uh, they, they uh, we, we uh. Vassar was an early adopter in marijuana. They adopted it before I was there and I just kind of fostered its growth. So we uh, we, we worked with this developer to clean up that site, redevelop the site. Uh, and they put in a significant investment, which uh, in two thousand twenty-one, it uh, taxable value was a hundred eighteen thousand. Today's taxable value is four point five million. So what that uh, the impact to the city's budget was a little over seventy thousand. But what I think is more impactful is the hundred thousand that the school is getting because that development. So that, that's the type of stuff that we can help school districts is, is grow our tax base and then it helps offset uh, um, their issues. But uh, a big issue that we've had with that is uh, just, we're working with them on controlling odor. It's a um, or uh, on a humid day, the whole town smells like marijuana and it uh, was not acceptable. Uh huh. So we're working with them to, we don't want to pull the rug out because we, you know, uh, we uh, rather than not sign off on their license. We wanted to work with them because they have done investment at sixty jobs and they're uh, good partners with us.
Um, when you become a city manager, how will you go about getting to know the community and building relationships with stakeholders? Who are those stakeholders? Business owners?
What's that? Business? Yeah, I would.
That's the third part of the question.
Uh, yeah, I would uh, go uh, um, not afraid to uh, you know, network around rooms. So any store, the type of um, uh, community events, uh, I would, and you know, any chamber of commerce. Uh, uh, events or um, uh, I'm a, I'm in the uh, Vassar Rotary Club. I was past president. If I was selected here, I would join uh, the Rotary Club here uh, as well. It's just a tremendously, uh, tremendous service organization uh, that I'm just proud to be a part of. So uh, do that and then uh, I would start my coffee hours and get into the community and ensure that uh, folks uh, know who I am in a, you know, positive manner.
This will be our last question. Yeah. All right, um. Oh, this sounds so. Um. All right, uh, so different people respond to information in different ways. Describe a situation that required you to communicate with a diverse group. How were they diverse? How did you adapt the information to the needs of individuals?
Um, the first thing that, that comes to mind is this, earlier on, uh, I worked for uh, on our political campaign. Uh, for Congressman Kildee, I was uh, gathering petition signatures. And I was talking in front of this group of uh, UAW retirees. And I kept referencing the group as guys, uh, you know, we just need you guys, we, we need your help. And I didn't think about it and I, I had somebody come up and very angry that I was, that I was saying that. And uh, uh, that's when I, you know, and changed to saying folks, right? That's uh, people liked that a little bit more. Um, but uh, and that's the situation I have that comes to mind.
Hey, so what questions do you have for us, if any?
Uh, maybe just one, if individually, if uh, like what do you see the biggest challenges uh, for, you know, the person coming into the spot?
All right, great question. Um, I think that right now, uh, I, I'll start. Um, our DPS facility is of top priority, are the safety of our employees and our colleagues. As well as um, the continuation of, you know, quality services being provided are a top priority. Um, seeking collaboration across uh, our county in terms of our unhoused population. And uh, affordable housing opportunities is another. And then the development and completion of a project at Water Street um, to help uh, with our, our tax burden. Um, would be a great start in terms of just some top of mind projects that we need support on, for me. Feel free to answer. Well, the unhoused community communication and. DPS. Thank you.
Um, I'd have to say facilities and staffing.
Um, for me, I would say uh, that there's a gaps in our current resources. And uh, the ways that we need to get where we need for future uh, population trends, both in terms of population size. And growth generational trends um, and desires, as well as a quality of life in different amenities that folks would like to see.
This is um. I have similarities. Uh, one thing, there's facilities, the Royal Street, um, communication is a key issue um, in the city. And making sure that the information gets out there, how it gets out there, helping people access that. Um, and then increasing the tax base. Um, that goes with Water Street is one way to do that, but we need other ways to uh, generate revenue. To address the gaps and the resources that we do have.
Then I can echo basically what everyone has already said. Um, but maximizing the use of our current land space in regards to, you know, housing. To increase taxes, um, as a obviously landlocked city that's a full service provider to their residents. Um, and finding the best ways to do that.
Any other questions for us?
No, I, I don't have any other questions. So just thank you all again for the time and I appreciate it. And I look, look forward to hearing from yous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mm-hmm.
All right, Mayor and Council, I want to introduce you to Vester Davis Junior.
Me, Desiree.
I've reached up.
You're looking important.
Nicole, nice to meet you.
Good to see you all again.
Okay, so um, we want to give you a minute or two to introduce yourself to us and then we'll get into the questions, Ron Robinson.
Okay. Well, I'd do a better job this time. Uh, earlier I kind of gave the whole spiel about my whole background and life and staff was like, that's enough. Um, so my name is Vester Davis Junior. I am currently the city manager for the city of Springfield, Michigan, which is located in Calhoun County, completely surrounded by City of Battle Creek. Um, I've been in my role for now three years, a little bit over three years now. Uh, prior to becoming the city manager in Springfield, I served the city of Stanton, which is in MacCom County. That's a rural community, uh, population about fifteen hundred people or so. Um, I served that community for two and a half years. Um, prior to that, I was in the city of Grand Haven, which is where I started in local government for about four, four and a half years. Um, began as an intern, um, decided to stick, stick around a little bit longer. Kind of learn a little bit more of the ins and outs of local government and city management. Um, but my education, I have my bachelor's and master's degree from uh, Grand Valley State University. Um, and decided that I wanted to explore public service a little bit more. Um, during that time, I've also spent some time working in the nonprofit world uh, for Arbor Circle, which is a homeless youth shelter. Um, did that for a number of years, also served and worked for the uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools System uh, for some time. Um, working with those individuals that were incarcerated, but still had the opportunity to uh, graduate from high school. So uh, that's a little bit more of a detail that don't show up in my current resume. But a little bit more background as to how I choose to serve the public.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna go around the table and ask you some questions.
Okay.
Council member too, so you can get us started.
All right, so what are five immediate actions that you would take if given the job?
Um, five immediate actions I would take is definitely learning the staff, getting to know everyone. Um, from this afternoon. Um, there seemed like there's some uh, comments that may be a little bit followed up on as to what the staff's needs are. Um, getting to know the community is uh, very important. Getting to know uh, city council. Um, everyone you are, chose to become a council member and you were elected to your position. So you all have some uh, sayings to where you like to see the community go in the fut- to the future. So get to know and get that feedback, take my notes, um, some things that need to be followed up on, uh, any outstanding projects. Um, I would like to tap into those, uh, uh, see the status of where those are at, um, and how I can be of assistance. I think that's number three that I'm at now. Two more things is getting to know the community. Um, definitely, I, as I alluded to, you know, the first ninety, a hundred eighty days is, is gonna feel like a, you know, drinking water from a fire, fire hose. So getting to know that the, the downtown businesses, um, and then the stakeholders in the community, who are some of those um, key individuals that. From a city council's point of view, you know, that maybe need to be tapped into and get to know a little bit better. I think that's, I'm at five, I can keep going, but I'll stop there.
Thank you.
So the city manager position requires you to respond to many requests in a short period of time. How do you ensure promptness, accuracy, and courtesy under these conditions? What specifically do you do?
Um, specifically what I do is, you know, I, I've been lucky enough and fortunate enough to have, maintain an open door policy. So following up is uh, been beneficial for me within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Um, check my, my emails, my phone calls uh, daily, try to get back to everyone within a timely uh, manner. If there's something that's gonna take a little bit more time, you know, I definitely would at least explain that to some of those that, that come in is. Give me a little bit more time, but definitely set a reminder, using different types of, types of tools to give calls back. Um, follow up on things, investigate matters and then, you know, um, share that information with whomever is inquiring. Uh, but I think the, the key in that is to um, at least let the individual know that you, you know, they've been heard. And that you're looking into whatever the, the issue is.
Thank you.
How would you handle a situation where two departments are at odds over how to best serve the community?
That happens? Uh, yeah. Um, I think bringing the parties together, there can be some misunderstanding or a lack of communication. Or a breakdown in communication, I would say, that may have occurred. So bringing the parties together. Uh, I think no one's above dialogue. We should be able to at least have, you know, talk things out and get a good understanding. And then once we, I feel like that's been done, is to, you know, uh, restate it. You know, is this a solution that we were, uh, everyone, all parties can agree upon? Um, and once that happens, you know, then follow up and check-ins should occur as well. But I think bringing the parties together, really big on having meetings, you know, having focused time, as I shared with staff this afternoon. Um, is one-on-one time to get a understanding and make sure all parties are heard and we can arrive at a solution.
Thank you.
You have experience with people centric as opposed to car centric, uh, city planning and design? And how would you approach such a project incrementally?
Yes, so the last two existing uh, uh, place of employment and the one prior to, you know, I am the zoning administrator. Uh, I serve as the zoning administrator, so I've taken the MSU uh, citizen planner uh, courses. I'm involved in the Michigan uh, Association of Planning Organization as well. Um, I really have an interest in making communities better. Uh, for instance, where I am presently, we have a four lane road that goes right through the center of town. And I've taken the initiative to bring the council to uh, have some type of study uh, uh, taken to how can we make this more walkable? And pedestrian friendly. Um, after witnessing numerous people bicyclists, peoples in wheelchairs trying to make it up a hill that's elevated. On four lanes of traffic is nearly impossible. So uh, bringing it to council with ideas, um, if we need to hire uh, actual uh, planners, bring them into the fold and have some discussion. Um, so all of those different ways that we want to be a complete design, uh, complete street design, uh, aspects into um, our own planning uh, for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, late evening. Um, can you uh, describe a time when you were under extreme pressure? How did you handle it and were you happy with the outcome? How did you care for yourself and the team?
Um, a time, as it's, that's constant as a city manager, you know, you are in the middle of the fray of balancing, you know, the needs versus the wants. Um, and, and what you see is maybe different, uh, what you feel is best for the city, maybe a little bit different than what, you know, maybe the elected officials or the city wants to see for itself. Um, I, I think that uh, one example that I could point to is um, you know. Say for instance, we have our public works building that was recently built. Um, the costs were coming in quite high. Um, there was a want to continue to add on new features and I had to uh, share with staff that some things we, we're gonna have to put on the cutting room floor. As so, as in leave it behind and come back to it at a different time because budgetarily, we are going outside of what we, the number that we set aside. Um, and I think through explanation as to where I uh, sat in my viewpoint, you know, I think that the, I believe that the department heads understood that, that. We don't, we can, we can stretch out, we don't have to do it all at once. We can stretch it out for multiple fiscal years to accomplish the, the needs that they, and the needs and wants that they had. But also what was um, gonna be beneficial to the city as well. Uh, how did I deal with that? You know, there's some tough conversations that have to occur. Um, I've shared with staff uh, here just this afternoon, I'm a big believer, big proponent of professional development on how to manage stress. You know, how to deal with when things don't go your way. So I'm just taking some education, you know, we all want to be warriors, but at the end of the day, we have to uh, is not always gonna be the way you see it. And how do you uh, explain it to those that are impacted or affected by the decision? And they may disagree with it, but the decision has to be made.
How do you prioritize short and long-term goals and expenditures? Ypsilanti has a lot of ongoing projects such as Water Street that need to be completed before we can move on to newer and bigger projects.
Yes, so I tend to focus on the core services, uh, in. Yes, so I tend to focus on the core services, uh, initially. You know, what's gonna be the most impactful to the citizenry, um, water, sewer, um, police, fire. Those core services that we offer and make sure that those are up to snuff, you know, I make sure those are pri- priorities. Um, for instance, where I am currently, we, we've had a, a major focus on water and sewer. And now it's the aesthetics, and I mean, bringing that to the forefront of my, uh, city council is. The aesthetics of the city, you know, the curb appeal, those things matter too, uh, when people drive through your community and. They're walking through your community, how, how is that looking, you know? Um, we're not, we're not gonna forget about, you know, water and sewer, those services, but people can't see them, you know? They're appreciated, we wanna make sure that they're reliable, but we have to balance it out, um, to, uh. The other aspects of that make up a community.
What transferable experience do you have with emergency management, especially as it relates to climate crisis mitigation and resilience?
Um, I'd say minimal, I haven't not had that, I've not had that experience other than COVID. Um, that was one that took this all, you know, to, toll on everyone, on how do you manage and how do you operate? Um, I know during that time, I, I didn't have the benefit of really staying at home, I'm more of. Like wanna be in office, boots on the ground and working with, uh, my team to address issues. Um, also collaborating with our county, um, in Cowan County, for instance, where they have the capacity to. Uh, to, to assist, uh, small communities like the one that I serve currently. Um, that is an area of, of improvement, um, something that I could touch into and do some more. Uh, legwork in terms of education and development on how to, uh, address those concerns, so. Um, that is a, something that I look forward to working on.
Thank you.
If there was one aspect of our government you could change, what would it be and why?
Of your gov- government here in Ypsilanti or just?
Government, however you take the question.
Um, I, I guess it, it varies, community, community to community is engagement, civic engagement. Um, how do we get better at that? Um, uh, where I'm at presently, you know, I understand that. We just have challenges, the people that live within our community have challenges in terms of their ability to make it to a evening meeting. Um, you know, with kids, I have children, luckily I have, uh, supportive spouses that, you know, can handle some of those after-school. Uh, uh, programs and things that I wanna have my children get into. Um, I don't know, I've, uh, still trying to understand how we can make government more accessible in that regard. Um, you know, what's the sweet spot for each community may vary, you know, is it earlier meetings, is it shorter meetings, is it? Um, changing the, you know, how we outreach, you know, what's, what is the capacity? And I, I like to build in capacity by partnering with organizations that are, serve our community as well. And say, can I share this information with you, how can I connect you on Facebook with us to get our information out as well as your information? So it's some, uh, more teamwork, I guess, and working with, uh, local, uh. Nonprofit agencies, organizations within the community and having a team atmosphere.
The city manager is often in a tug-of-war, residents, employees, elected officials, et cetera. What is your go-to strategy for dealing with conflict?
Um, dialogue, you know, getting a core understanding of what the issue is, sometimes you have to. Pull yourself out or, or withdraw yourself from, uh, the actual conflict to get a, to hear people. To listen to them and get the core issue, you know, what is it? Maybe someone like we mentioned earlier, uh, you know, parking issue, or it's, uh, I. I don't know, people are going through a lot of different things in these, these days and times, but trying to get the core understanding of what the concern is. I think having meetings, uh, plays a part in that, um, having a good facilitator is, plays a part in that. Uh, sometimes you're gonna have to bring in others from the outside that aren't, uh, involved in the issue. Yeah, you know, create the atmosphere where people can, can speak to one another and not just yell or fight. So I've dealt with that even with amongst our staff members is resolving conflict. Uh, unfortunately, in a smaller community, it, it takes up a lot of time, it's just addressing conflicts. Uh, I think I've gotten more than my share of like, what am I doing? What is, what is the, uh, issue that I'm trying to resolve? And I've had to withdraw myself and really think critically about what that is. Um, I've even, uh, took upon myself to attend MSU facilitation training, uh, to get a better. Feel and understand of how can I facilitate conversations and dialogue amongst others to reach that, uh, level of, uh. Core understanding of the issue and how to resolve it and making sure the right people are in the room, you know, to, to address the issue.
How do you nurture and manage a diverse team, whether that is in background or viewpoints?
Was the last part you said?
Uh, I'll just repeat the whole thing, how do you nurture and manage a diverse team, whether that is in background or viewpoints?
Um, I think being open to, uh, everyone's viewpoints on matters. Um, sometimes those that are the least vocal, um, may have great ideas and solutions to issues. Um, and then re- re- repeating or, I, I mentioned the facilitation in the last response, but I think that that's been a. A great tool to have is how to facilitate, uh, people with different viewpoints. And seeing if there is some commonality, um, amongst the group. Um, allowing people the space and the opportunity to, to voice their thoughts, make sure that they know that they're valued and they're heard. Um, and then working from there is to, uh, you know, reducing it down to. Um, you know, what is the, the final outcome, but I think knowing and understanding that everyone has a different viewpoint. Um, and that showing that you have va- they have value and, you know, not dis- discounting them. Because it may not be the most favorable or most popular, um, but it may be some good food for thought in what they. Care to share or offer as part of that.
You describe a major project or idea that was implemented primarily because of your efforts. What were the biggest challenges and how did you overcome them?
Um, so recently, when I began in Springfield, you know, we, there had been talks about having a dog park in the city. Um, it wasn't something that no one had, no one had taken action on it, it'd just been talked about and talked about and. You know, I decided that we were going to focus on our parks, I'm a big proponent of, I think. Uh, parks and rec life is very important in the community. Um, so I, I spend my time, a lot of my time is how can we make our parks better? I think even through COVID, we learned that having great public spaces are key. Um, so it took some, some lift and I got the funding to, uh, bring the park to, to life. I'm also partnered with, uh, was advocates in the county that are proponents of dog parks. Uh, dog lovers, uh, for their support and their guidance on how to build a, the design, a, a fantastic dog park. Um, and the outcome was, you know, uh, city council, they kinda supported, but they were kinda on the fence as well as to. How that would be impactful and it's taken off, it's been, it's one of the second, uh, dog park in the Cowan County area. Um, is very, is used a lot, is also spurred some more interest in, uh, what other amenities can be built around. Um, the dog park and attract people, we had a park that was underutilized, it was, uh, just sat there. But now is, we now have a accessible parking lot that people can, uh, along, uh. Abilities can access the dog park and bring them, we also have a gazebo there that people can use, a grill that's there. So we just continue to add on, um, and, and the response has been, uh, phenomenal. Um, because, you know, we've had just let it go on for so long, whereas no one uses, you know, this public space, this public amenity. Uh, so that's just one that I can go to at, at this point in time, but, um, being in a small community is. Looking for opportunity to, to be better and, uh, it just takes someone to be a little bit cavalier to say, we're going to do this. Um, and I've been able to do that, um, every budget year that we've had is. You can, it's a clear connection between what I said we were gonna do and what we did. Um, so it's taking action on and follow through on, uh, the things you say you're gonna do.
How do you handle politically sensitive issues with staff, council, and the public?
And others?
And the public.
And the public. Um, thing setting up, uh, I always go back to this, is understanding the issue, you gotta have a clear understanding. If not, let's set up a subcommittee, you know, of some key individuals, make sure we have the right stakeholders in the room. Um, to, to initial, have the initial, uh, dialogue about what it is that's bothering or what's the issue is. And then from there, um, let's put together some, uh, attainable goals, uh, some action items. Um, and, and, and get to work on whatever the case may be, but I think it has to definitely go back to. Understanding where people's perspective is and what the city's role is in, uh, in solving that. You know, is there something that we can, we have the capacity to do, or do we need to bring in others, uh, to assist? Consultants, whatever the, the case may be, but what's in our toolbox to utilize to, uh, address the issue?
Given that the city of Ypsilanti has the highest property taxes in the area, what strategy would you use to decre- decrease this burden on residents?
Um, highest property tax, I think we had to look at the, the makeup of our tax base, uh, for one. Is, is where we, um, at, I've shared this earlier is that, you know, you all have, which is a great asset. You have the school, um, located here in the city and you have a number of, uh, religious organizations in the city. And those entities do not pay, um, property taxes, so, uh, you have to look at. What the, the mix-up, what, what do we have currently, is it purely residential? You know, what opportunities are there to diversify that a little bit more and do some attraction of, of businesses? And the types of bus- business types, um, i- is very important, you know, and where are you locating that? I think, um, if something is near, almost, if not completely built out. So you have to look at what are some vertical opportunities to develop upward. Um, i- i- is it gonna possibly be the key there? Yes, definitely diversifying the tax base, doing some analysis and understanding what the opportunities are. That lie there and then that action plan on how to, how to change it up a little bit.
Thank you.
Um, can you tell us about your experience with addressing affordable housing issues? How would you approach this issue if you were the next city manager and what are your accomplishments in this area, if any?
Yes, so I, uh, have an interest in affordable housing, I, I think there's. Key is important, uh, from a statewide perspective, we've seen all the rising costs of, of housing to, um. So I participate in the statewide housing plan and, uh, with through Michigan, Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Um, I've actually focused on for, at least for my city and the region that I serve, um, is on housing stock. Um, keeping people in their homes, um, so that they're not priced out and they have to go elsewhere. Um, I've actually been able to, uh, obtain grants through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Uh, recently, we, um, leveraged twenty-five thousand dollars of our local funds to obtain a grant of seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's through MISTHA, the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, which allow, uh, affords people with funding to improve their roofs, their windows. Those core pieces of, to, to allow for safe housing, um, painting that house, I think we're, uh, as I alluded to earlier, it was the curb appeal. Um, and then we hoping, I'm hoping and my goal is that that's a catalyst for, uh, others. That may be within a different tax bracket to, uh, perform upkeep on their property as well. Um, I also, uh, applied for another, uh, grant opportunity through MISTHA for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So in total, we're close to three-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars of funding. That will go towards those that are low to moderate income, um, to, to, to enhance our housing stock. And outside of that is to look more at the modular homes, you know, what are the different types of homes that we can bring to the community? Um, that would, uh, attack that need for affordable housing. So it runs the gamut, but we wanna diversify the different types of housing and housing needs. So when I talk about, you know, the tax base, I'm also talking about, you know, in all income levels, you know, to make sure that. We can have a good mix, it's not just all low to moderate income, it's gonna be higher income, it's gonna be the lower income, it's gonna be. Everyone is part of the community makeup, so, um, that's where I'm focused at and where I currently serve. Um, that's a, a goal that, you know, I'm pushing our city council to think about. Um, I'm bringing in the resources, financial resources to assist, um, and making it a, a top goal. That the city council has bought into, um, and they're allowing me to take the charge on how we're gonna do it. Um, which I applaud them and I appreciate, and I think that, uh, city councils should, uh, allow the staff to kind of. Begin working on, you know, how to address, you know, if that's a goal of yours, allow the city manager and the team to, to do that.
Thank you.
If you are appointed city manager, what is your plan for the first one-hundred-and-eighty days?
That question sounds familiar. Um, um, I, I think the first one-hundred-and-eighty days is you're gonna do your best to get to know the, the key people. And in the community, getting to know your staff is, is of the utmost importance, you know? Um, letting them know that they can rely on you and you can rely on them, um, boosting the morale and. Getting everyone excited on, you know, the one-hundred-and-eighty days is, uh, what needs to happen? What are the projects that are currently underway, I kinda shared that earlier, uh, what is my role in the number of those projects? Um, if there's any assistance that, uh, members of the team they need, how can I be of assistance? Um, I truly believe in granting people autonomy to do their job, um, and not being a micromanager. Uh, but I am there to assist, uh, I am there to, to lead and if that's coming to city council, getting to know you all individually. As I alluded to earlier, you know, a city council is a body, but within that body, you all have some. Uh, ideas that, you know, maybe have not been fully expressed, how can I help you? You know, get those, uh, ideas out and work amongst you all as a team. Um, and then all together, you know, getting to know our stakeholders, you know, like I mentioned, the downtown. Going down to the local businesses, getting their field, we have a DDA here in Ypsilanti, um, that I hear is, you know. It's kind of a, a lull right now, but, you know, maybe we can, wh- what are the opportunities to get those individuals, um. Or those businesses, you know, excited about the future. Um, so it's, it's a lot to accomplish in one-hundred-and-eighty days, but I think, uh, coming with a game plan and working that game plan is going to. Be key, um, but the one-hundred-and-eighty days, you know, doing your best to have a presence, um. Uh, let everyone know that you're here, you're visible, you, you're on this team and you, you're ready to go.
How do you ensure transparent and effective communications?
Well, I, I will say that you all do a great job of that, uh, you know, more, better than a lot of communities. Um, I've learned so much about Ypsilanti just by going to your website, I mean, you all put everything on there, uh, which is amazing. Um, so I, I think I would just share that same focus as to, you know, if you have a question, being accessible. Providing you all with updates, um, I currently do a, a bi-weekly report, if it could be weekly. If it could be weekly, however you all would like to be informed, uh, you just share that information with me and. And I'll uh, fill up your inbox, I'll also share with the city, you know, so just tapping in with the communi- communications. Uh, specials that you all have on staff and uh, lending, you know, my updates as well. Um, but just building off what's currently in existence, um, you know. I I think you are already on the the right path with that is, and that's being one of your your goals here in Ypsilanti is to be. Uh, transparent with your government.
Can you describe a time when you failed in a leadership role and the lesson you learned? Did you implement change?
Yes, so once, uh, I I won't go into the whole details, but you know, given uh. Raises, you know, to staff members, um, and I got some bad advice that, you know, I had to apologize for because. Uh, you know, it wasn't, wasn't the right way, you know, the recommendation was given to me on, this is how the um. Raises were going to be given out and one person or I think I believe it was one person who was didn't get this, you know, a fair amount. Um, and so I had to go back to that individual, you know, explain to them how, you know, how. I played a part, held myself accountable and uh, we we corrected the issue and I think we're in a good standing today, but. Definitely holding yourself accountable and when you do uh, make mistakes is 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 very important. Um, not the best feeling because you want to be right all the time. I think we all do, but if you can. Uh, hold yourself accountable and say, I did something, you know, as builds that trust and character. In yourself and trust them with the uh, affected party. Um, so, yes.
How do you determine what projects and initiatives are worth investing time and resources in?
I believe it starts with city council, um, giving clear direction from council, you know, what your goals are for the city. Um, with input, I hope with input from myself and the team that I have is. Um, on what we see, we're kind of more, you know, liaisons to you all. To to assist with, you know, what we hear as needs. Um. And and so having that focus on those broad goals that that city council sets, um. I've instituted, uh, you know, having strategic go work sessions with our city council and and staff. Um, when the budget process begins to get an understanding, so they're all on the same page and we know what we're working for. Um, and that bleeds into how we set the budget. Um, and then I think it has to wrap around with uh, re- regular updates and how frequently you like to see those updates. It can be quarterly, it could be um, you know, mid-year. Um, but I think you have to have some tangible uh, expectations as to what you're going to work on. And what's not so, something that may be, uh, what I would consider in the parking lot that we have to get to is a great idea. But these are more uh, important um, projects or priorities that. Will be the most impactful to the citizenry um, of the city.
How do you build effective working relationships with it? With people from a wide range of backgrounds, education levels, positions within the organization, community members and so on?
Yes, uh, I think being accepting and and listening is a big, big part of it. Um, you have to be able to humble yourself, which I I have no problem doing that. And just know that everyone has value in what they say. Uh, sometimes it may be. Yeah, a little bit like off, like wow, where did that come from? But if you listen closely enough, there's something that someone may be trying to convey to you that they may not have the words or the acumen to. Say it correctly. Um, and then follow up with questions, you know, to clarify if you're understanding them correctly. Um, and repeating it back to 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 people, but I think, you know, in my travels, uh, uh. As I shared earlier, the places that I've worked, um, I've come to learn that, you know, whether it was working in. City of Grand Haven where you have, you know, high income individuals, you have some uh, medium income. To working in Stanton, Michigan where there's a lot of low income people, but everyone. That I came across, they had something that they were trying to share with me or they want to see done. And so it doesn't matter, you know, what what your standing is in the community. Even on city councils, there's different range of uh, perspectives that, you know, everyone has something to contribute. So I I don't overlook anyone or anyone's participation. But more so try to get a good understanding and clarity as to what their concerns are and how I can be of assistance.
Thank you.
Yes.
What is your experience in the area of budget and finance? Have you been involved directly in the mechanics of budgeting? Budget presentations at meetings and monitoring the budget? Please explain.
Yeah, so part of my degree is in budgeting and finance. I actually thought I wanted to be an accountant and then I said, no. I love numbers, but not that much. Um, but no, I think putting together the budget is. I like to, I I believe in systems. I believe that there's some correlation between what we say and what we do and you have to put. The uh, you have to budget for what you want to see for the success. Um, so when we talk about having our master plan or any plan that we have. You know, we have to directly tie it to our budget, you know, and a budget line to expenses. Um, as far as tracking the budget, yeah, as part of the presentation is the formulation process, having the capital improvement plan. Um, I'm firm believer, as I shared with staff earlier, that you have to plan for expenses. I just can't just say we'll, money just going to appear. So uh, that's part of it. Um, I think having dialogue with staff and their needs and then knowing how the fiscal, the budget works. You know, and when I talked about earlier is some projects may have to be split up between fiscal years. Maybe not all done in one uh, one time, um, but broken up over a number of fiscal years. Um, so yes, uh, also the budget, uh, I track the budget on uh. A weekly to bi-weekly uh, basis. I get the emails of the monies that came in and the money that went out, so our revenue and expenditures report. I track those, I track the where we're at in the fiscal year, you know, for first quarter or quarterly reports. Um, and how we're standing to make sure that we have enough funding to get to the end of the the fiscal year. And that we have enough monies for um, those things that may pop up, um, that we weren't, that weren't planned for. But trying to keep that to a minimal by doing all of our planning work ahead of time. Um, beyond that, um, I. As I shared with staff earlier, I like to uh, look into more fund balance on how we are assigning our fund balance. Um, and make sure we have, we're we're at least for one, meeting our twenty to twenty-five percent fund balance. Just in case there is an emergency, but beyond that, assigning a number for some of our major capital expenses. That may be coming up in the next near term. Um, and then long-range planning is. Um, you know, doing our forecasting regularly on where we're going to be at in a number of years. And how we're going to pay for things. Um, I hate to be in a bind, um, and say we don't have money for that. It's like, well, what do we need to change to get better at it? Um, so yes, all in all, I I'm very keen on budgeting, administrable budgeting and. Ultimately, like I said, planning for capital improvement, projects, equipment, all of that has to be discussed ahead of time so that. We're prepared in case of a, an emergency uh, happening.
Thank you.
What types of community and economic development projects have you worked on in the past and what were the outcomes they brought about?
Um, a number of them. So as I mentioned, we had a DDA in the city of Stanton. We do not have one in the city of Springfield, but we do have a tax increment financing authority. Um, currently, we're in the process of updating our plan, our TIF plan, on how we're going to spend those those monies that come in. Um, prior to my arrival, the plan had been expired. We're still collecting, but we had no real idea as to. Where we're going to spend it on. Um, I believe the city of Ypsilanti has a TIF. And you all have some incentives on how you can, you know, those monies can be used, incentivize uh, business attraction. Um, you know, I I think that that's a good part of the economic development. I think housing is part of economic development as well. Um, so beyond that, I'm also a member of uh. The Economic Development Association for the state of Michigan as well. Um, so some involvement there. Um. So it's all ties back to understanding where we're headed and where we want to go and what are our tools and I think economic development. There's a vast range of what you would consider economic development. It's just settling in and having a a greed focus as to. What do we need now and how are we going to use those tools that uh, uh, that are afforded to, to us? To uh, address economic development.
Steve, you'll be asking the last question.
Okay. Um, when you become a city manager, how would you go about getting to know the community and building relationships with stakeholders? Uh, who are those stakeholders? Is it uh, business owners?
Yeah, many stakeholders in the community. I think having an open house, even doing listening tour. Um, getting around to uh, business being present. I shared earlier, I may have not shared with you all, but you all may have read it in my bio. You know, I have a family of, you know, my kids, I have three children and and a wife, so we are very involved in our community where we. Are currently in sports and academics. Um, those opportunities are are things that. Allow me to be present in some other areas, even on my off time. Um, so showing up. Um, getting to know people. I've visited your shops downtown. I shared this with staff earlier. I was in town last weekend. Um, visiting a few of the stores and eateries and brought my family around, so um, it's pretty much uh, you know, me and. And the family, you know, we 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 come as a package deal and uh, you know, just getting involved. Uh, with 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 in we're in areas that I can. Um, but I think the stakeholders are definitely going to be your residents, your business owners, your religious organizations, your nonprofit organizations. Um, the staff here, you know, we all play a part and that's part of what community is all about is. Everyone, you have an opportunity to be involved and like I mentioned earlier, there's one of the changes I would make to the local government is. Those that maybe have an interest in being involved or want to serve, want to or board or commission, but may not have the the. The time afforded to them to do so. Um, um, so, but they still may have some some value in what they want to. Their voice. Um, so I think all together is, whomever is a part of your community, they're a stakeholder. Whether they live, mostly the people that live here, but even those that visit here, you want to get some of their feedback too. I think you do that through, you know, maybe survey, I shared that earlier, um, people's feelings and thoughts about the community. And you take that, you do your evaluation on what you you gained and better plan on what are the opportunities? You know, what are those opportunities to grow and be better?
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I I guess I always ask this question, is there anything that I may have stumbled on or didn't really answer clearly? Um, that I may want to follow up on. But I do stand between you and your bed, so understand that as well.
Oh, I did want to um, ask a question. So a part of the question is at a time when you and you were under extreme pressure, how did you? I'm sorry, how did you handle it and were you happy with the outcome? How did you care for yourself and your team? I feel like I didn't hear you say how you care for the team.
So I I guess I'll point to, um, what I began doing with with the staff is following up after we have our council meetings. Um, uh, that's one, one idea or one suggestion that I've done is, you know, sometimes you, you know, you work with your team and you all think you have the best. Uh, presentation or you have, you know, the best proposal and it doesn't go your way. Uh, following up the next morning, the next day and saying, you know, let's talk about what happened at the council meeting, what. You know, how can we, you know, maybe reframe uh, what what occurred? Um, and what's, what are the next steps? So reassuring, you know, the staff members is is a key because they. Are giving their all, I believe, and and want to see the best for the community and sometimes it doesn't go your way. You have to give offer reassurance. Um, I think beyond that, it's uh, definitely keeping the morale, uh. We're seeing what's needed, doing the check-ins with staff, check-ins with yourself. Um, I shared this earlier with the staff is that, you know, I brought on board where I currently am. Uh, employee assistance program, you know, doing those check-ins and seeing how, what's the temperature of the room and. Even for myself, you know, is it can be a high stressful uh, job at at times and some frustration. But you have to balance it out by finding a hobby, finding a person that's someone to speak to, talk to. Um, and keeping your own self, you know, straight, because if you don't have your, the right mentality and you, you know, you're. Feeling the stress of the job, it is not going to bode well for your health and your future, so. Um, doing the the check-ins and um, reading the temperature of the room and seeing what's needed to keep people. Boost it up and support it, feel and support it.
Thank you. Any other questions for us?
Um, you know, I I keep it going. I took my nap, so I'm, I'm ready to go, but no, I I I guess I I. I've asked that question if there was anything else. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to to come before you all. Um, appreciate the opportunity to meet staff this this afternoon. Um, I think you all have uh. Um, great quality candidates and I wish you all the best on your selection. Um, if not, I'll I'll see some of you all around, you know, at conferences and whatnot, so you all are doing an excellent job, I think. Um, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone for hanging out with us. This is our second opportunity for public comment if there's anyone. Uh, in the room or on Zoom. Ha, I ran. Sorry, never.
There's anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak, press the raise hand button? Nope.
All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and uh, this meeting is adjourned.
That's all, folks.